Is somebody here to talk about Goddard School?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Why don't we spend the next couple of minutes setting up for Goddard School and then we can start on time?
How would you prefer to do that?
Did you bring easels or anything with you?
I have both or I can do it on the table. I have plans.
Well, it's good if you have an easel. The camera likes to look at the presentation.
You can put it over here if anybody gets to it.
Do you folks want to see it?
Yeah. Put it in an angle here. The camera can see it.
I have one big one if you want.
Are you able to do any traffic evaluation at all?
I have been waiting for Joe to provide that information to me because I don't know where he is. I thought he was here.
Who's going to be waiting this evening? He said he'd be here before eight.
He said eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen?
Yeah, sure your name.
Okay. There he is. We're just starting on the Goddard School.
Okay.
And the question that I had before we started meeting was, do we have any traffic information?
No, that's in progress. Bob Michaud is getting to me a scope of information that they will then need to provide. So that's why I said that. Basically for tonight, get through the presentation. We'll continue to the 18th. We should be able to get that information and Bob actually has worked on a number of Goddard Schools out in the Marlboro, South Borough area. So he has this information to then provide to them very easily.
Okay, well, it's eight fifteen. So I think we can start the limited site plan review for the Goddard School at Two North Avenue. Before we start, I think we might as well just go ahead and introduce ourselves. I'm Al Ailwad. I'm the chairman of the planning board. The other members are...
Stu Zacharias.
Steve Hopper.
David Riddles.
Luchal Lash. Your lady come back.
All right. We've given this about 25 minutes, half an hour for discussion. If you could make your presentation and say 15 minutes or so, then we could open it up for comments from our consultants and the board, and then the remaining time, open it up to the floor for comments from the other members in the audience.
Very good. Do you mind if I sit or stand?
You can sit if that makes you feel more comfortable.
Two, I didn't realize it was going to be televised. Two, Joe told me that I had seven minutes. So I'm not going to drag it out. And I'm taking this from the basis that you're familiar with the project. You have taken a look at the information that we submitted in advance.
Yeah, I think what would be beneficial for us is running through existing proposals, especially since, even though a couple of people who attended are here, there's some faces I didn't recognize from the sidewalk and also...
Not everyone from the board actually attended the sidewalk. So we don't get the information in advance. So, okay.
So if I could, let's go right through it. This is the existing site. We went through zoning board for the variance to increase the gross square footage for the property. And it's an existing paved parking lot. If you haven't been onto the site, an existing, I'm going to call it split level, 3,000 square foot area. In the back is former vegetated. If I look at town records, I think it's been a childcare facility since the late 70s, early 80s. Function is to stay the same. We're talking about about an 8,000 square foot building. The footprint is right here. The front of the new building is approximately the front of the old building. It's a complete removal of the existing building, complete removal of the existing asphalt surfaces. The existing driveways are 21 plus, I mean about 27 feet. The end scheme will narrow them down to 16 feet. Revisions a little bit to the curb lines up front. Fire Department, Police Department have looked at the plans, renewed it, and Fire Department especially feels like we're very corporate and no problem. Board of Health has gone through the septic design. It's still in private septic design. Renewed and approved that. All of the underground utilities, gas, water, are all underground. There's an existing site pole that is located. It's over here. We'll retain that because it's all aerial and it will go underground from there. The electric load is a little bit larger, obviously, a larger building. So it'll be a transom path screening, of course. Paved parking area, fenced, child play areas. A little bit different than what you've seen in the past. In the early submission of the paperwork is, there's three distinct child play areas. It's all fenced. The front fence area is a six-foot-high picket-style fence. You can see through it. We've gone through a couple of, had a couple of site meetings with some of the butters. And they would prefer to see a solid fence, a privacy fence system on the back. So we're starting a privacy fence back here in this corner and running it all the way around to the back. Six feet high, not any higher than that. It lies with the local requirements. In addition to the solid privacy fence, we're proposing to put plantings, and I think I've got about 12 trees back here. And I'm just showing them spaced right now with the idea that we talked about to possibly clump them together to take benefit of a little bit more natural screening, particularly when you get into the sight line over here. When you get into the sight line over here and then same way over here, there's the two rear butters there. They're trying to satisfy a site on a little more private. The building, I don't know if you've seen pictures of the building. Well, let me finish before you get into the building. There's a dumpster pen, if you will, on the site as well. Typically, the debris that you find in the dumpsters, paper products that are vertical trans, at which you'd find in a normal office park, nothing, anything greater than that. There's screening on that. That's also a solid privacy PVC fence around it. The granite, the curb system that we're proposing here is a vertical granite curb system throughout the front area of the lot. That's the only traffic area of the lot. The existing site is, I'm going to say, we're going to retain the existing site. If you were to drive by, you'll see the drive. It's a little bit of a plateau. The configuration back here is uphill. So the site will come up to generally match here. The slab's at 145.9. The front side is about a six-inch step down, and then everything else goes here. I'm kind of waiting on the drainage to talk until David comes back because we've been working with, I've been working with him on satisfying some hydrology. Are there any questions so far on the site, pretty much straightforward?
We're going to poll questions.
Okay.
With your presence here.
It's a slab-on-grade building, single-story structure. The plate for the bottom of the truss is up about 12 feet. And the overall height's 26 to 28 feet. I think this information is in the book. There's an A document that shows the overall look of the building.
If you could actually go to the other side of that drawing so that you're on, it's right.
So you want me over there?
Well, so that the camera can see.
Oh, I'm sorry. How about that?
Yep, that's good. Yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah. Just so that I can get something as a shot.
So it's pretty... I call it a tractor. Okay?
Current student population is what?
I'm sorry, sir?
Current student population.
Capacity of the building's 132 students.
For the new building?
For the new building.
The existing facility, do you know how many children there are?
I don't. I don't believe it's been operating for a certain...
About 10, 10 to 10 per 10. It's just a house.
Yeah, okay.
We have been working with Joe and his group for a little while, for the past, actually, four or five months. Some initial concerns about the site and the drainage, now I'm speaking to you about the drainage, was a recommendation to add drains and capture them at the entrance. So we've been able to do that. We've got two storm scepters that are treating it, so the total solids are treated. And then the recent discussion was to make it standalone and self-sufficient on the site, which it is now. We sent today the final hydrology report to Dave on the revised design. We have the site sign that we're proposing out front, lit. And there are light fixtures. There's a double masthead here. There's a light fixture over here. There's a light fixture over here. And fortunately, when I printed this out, I didn't have the foot candle analysis done in the 11 by 17 or this big one. But I have done it. We have done it. And I can submit it as part of the package. It shows zero bleed. These are all LED lights. They respect the night, the dark sky criteria. And there are lights on the perimeter of the building as well. The operation of the building has it dark unless occupied. So when you drive by it, let's say that all the students are on at 7 o'clock and you drive by it, the lights are controlled both with daylight sensors and with time clocks. So if it's not occupied, the building will be dark. The site will be dark.
No emergency lights at all?
When emergency lights work, you lose power.
Well, it's not completely dark? Not one single light fixture on?
Right.
Although there will be some, most likely some lights inside after hours for cleanup, people cleaning up, so...
Then there's people in there. There are actually motion sensors on the switches. And there's sensors that control if there is no occupancy sense, then the lights do in fact go out. So they are fairly well-controlled in that respect. And there'll be a master time clock that operates the lights that are on the facade, the lights that are under the soffit, and the lights that operate the sight lights as well.
Do you have, in addition, do you have a total number of lumens outside?
I can...
Is the calculation we were going to be looking for?
We didn't ask for a lumen table because of the fact that the use is different than residential. And so we're trying to get them to be at the one foot, the one foot candle, similar to the average, similar to how we applied it at the field school, as well as the parking lot for Regis College. So there are, when you look at the photometric plan, there are hotspots right around the building because they have dark side compliant walls, hauses that illuminate that walkway. But then basically it zeros out as you get closer to the property line.
So we'll get that information later.
I want to have you get your magnifying glass. But then I realized I didn't have the L1 printed out in large format.
So you do have a forward diagram?
You can see it to zero.
All right, so give a look at that maybe next time.
Yeah.
Anything else you want to tell us about the building?
No, we propose to build it better than codes require, better than the actual codes.
Do you have a generator?
No.
No generator?
No. No power in this hall.
Illustrations that you showed us, you had drawings that showed the fencing around the top of the roof, a photograph which showed it without the fencing, which do you think in your regard?
You don't have the fencing.
So with the drawings?
Yes. Couldn't get the number to answer.
What's the area of the building and the area of the lot?
The area of the lot is 48,000 plus or minus. I don't have the exact number. Actually, the building is... Where shall I measure from? If I measure from the outside walls, it's 8,120. If I do it for the gross square footage, from the inside walls, I believe it's 7,918 or 08 or something like that. I had to do that calculation for this report, and I don't have it handy, sir.
The ZVA has approved the size of the building?
Yes.
Right.
Could you review for me what four things were allowed?
Sure, I can just go from this right from... Okay, so in our bylaw, Site Plan Section K 3, and there's actually a number of items. Plan Board's Review and Evaluation of the Application for Limited Site Plan shall be moved to the following criteria. A, adequate parking shall be provided, meeting the applicable requirements of Section 8 of the zoning bylaw as to the minimum number of off-street parking spaces, the location and size of parking areas, and construction standards in a manner which allow for safety handling, maneuvering, and pedestrian movement within the site. Where applicable, appropriate... Sorry. Adequate facilities for loading and unloading of stock merchandise materials and supplies shall be provided and screened in accordance with Section 8. B, site drains shall be designed in accordance with Town West Stormwater bylaws in effect at the time. C, the design and adequacy of sewer disposal systems to preserve the proposed development shall be in accordance with Board of Health requirements. D, electric telephone, cable TV, and other such utilities shall be installed underground, except where this cannot be accomplished unless it is physically or environmentally feasible. E, parking areas adjacent to residential uses shall be adequately screened here around from views from said residence by trees, vegetation, or fence. F, there shall be no unreasonable glare onto public roads or other public ways into the night sky or onto neighboring properties from lighting or reflection. G, the site plan shall demonstrate conformance with applicable lot area setback and height regulations for the zoning district in which the premises are located.
Do you happen to know how much material you're moving onto the site, what the volume of new material is?
I submitted those calculations to Joe.
John Field.
John Fields.
Okay.
And let me refresh my memory. Approximately 1,900 yards.
Does this trigger the earth movement by law?
It doesn't because of the exemptions between septic and the foundation and the parking lot areas. That's where that whole lot percentage really comes into play, you know, and why they went to the ZVA. Because within the residence district, there's a 10% block coverage. This comes in around 15. And with a good size, even though it's basically a slab, basically all the material for the parking lot and that building basically gets reused on-site. So it gets exempted from the calculations.
That's kind of funny because the purpose of that exemption is for removal, not bringing stuff in. You know what I'm saying?
Right, but you need to bring in the material for the septic. So that's exempt.
But what about the rest of it? 1,900 cubic yards? They don't need 1,900 for the septic system. It was to exempt a cellar hall and excavation for driveway. To exempt them, you could go Mount Everest and under the building, it would all be exempt.
You stated earlier that the parking pad, and I know it probably goes up, and so you're going to do something. Is that what you're adding, bringing in material?
The site is low, right back here. So essentially, the grade of the parking area stays the same. This is brought up to it.
Okay.
So it's all in the back?
Right, it's all in the back. So actually, it's the interesting, so height of building? Height of building, how many feet above ground, how much works this all?
Well, what is the height of average grade of work construction?
Right now, the existing structure?
No, the highest point of the new roof from the average existing grade, I think it's probably under...
Actually, the average existing grade is, this is about 145 right here, and this is the low. This gets filled up to the 145.
Right, but when the height is calculated in the town, you take the grade before construction. The average grade is a start point for measuring the height. So if you're raising the building... Susan's question is, are you still looking at?
You ever imagine?
Yes, I believe we are. But I didn't use it from that average. I used it from the 145.
What's the height of the building?
28 feet.
And how many feet difference between the build area and...
145.
Probably another 37.
37.
That's the...
That's our max.
That's the limit.
Yeah, 37.
The site is minus 3 back here.
So he's coming up to 145. He's adding 3 feet. What was it, 29?
27, what did you say?
28 feet.
So it's like 31?
132.
Anyway, it'd be good to have that.
I think realistically, the special permit is required because of the fact that it's... While this is exempt use under 48, Section 3, the only thing our bylaw exempts is commercial agricultural. So just like the school, the special permit would apply. It's a special permit for the movement. It's 48, Section 3, you can't require a special permit for the use. But here, it's basically like a dimensional requirement. So basically, that'll be something that we'll have to advertise for and wrap into part of this, which...
Right. Well, he's coming back. Is he?
Yeah, he's coming back. And realistically...
Is there enough time for an advertisement between now and then? It's two weeks, isn't it?
It is two weeks. And no, it's not because it's two weeks from tonight. If it was two weeks from tomorrow night, yes. But realistically, we're going to have, between getting that things together, there's going to be enough to chew over on that then for that first meeting in March. We could basically have the hearing on the earth movement and then followed by review of the decision. Since we'd want to keep the hearing open anyways for that. So depending on where we are on the 18th, you know, we could basically wrap those in similar to what we did with Pine Brook, with their earth movement and site.
Yeah, no, I mean, we could. It's just that it's going to, it means another...
Right.
Extending out to another meeting.
Right.
Because we haven't seen the traffic, right?
No, no.
It's going to come in two weeks.
How many occupants, maximum occupants again?
132 students.
132 into a very...
Plus teachers, yeah.
Plus teachers, yeah. So, yeah, it's the traffic is critical here. That's 317. It's bedlam in the morning. When everybody is dropping off and picking up and so, yeah, is that... When is Bob Michaud coming in?
So what's happening is that I reviewed this application with Bob. He's going to be itemizing what information needs to be collected. And it's rather strategic because the main thing is you already have existing accounts on 117. They have existing facilities within the Metro West area that they're able to extrapolate some of this data. He's basically just not going to identify for me, here's the information you just need to have them submit, and then he'll be able to do basically a peer review. Because the main thing is that we want to make sure that the traffic on 117 and the traffic association with this business, they don't conflict with vehicles stacking internally exiting onto 117. Anecdotally, Bob had said that the number, I think we should get a little focused by the number because people think it all arrives at once. So because he's had experience permitting these in Marlboro and South Borough, he's very familiar with this actually. So he can focus them in on exactly what information they need to provide.
I'm just thinking there with you, Al, that can put a David, like South Bay, number that's a great beginning. That's another nightmare, 30, and people dropping off and everything. Let the interns out of there, writing.
Just queuing, the line, dropping students off, queuing onto Route 30, that was the problem.
And things are much worse now, next number of years later than they were 10 years ago.
Yeah.
I don't know if the hours were as varied. I know I drive by a similar one in Wayland every single morning, and I've not noticed any problems. And Route 30 can be backed up all the way into Contituette and just crawling along.
It's everything back up to Hudson, I think. So, yeah, it does. But that's okay, just as long as you're aware that this is really something that we look at really carefully.
So we're looking, okay, so we're looking at next, with the next meeting, which is two weeks from now, at the Bob Michaud and the traffic impacts.
Right, and the idea is that also the civil engineering has basically been just submitted over the last couple of days.
They've got, you have to vet the civil engineering.
To be fair, they submitted it, but they revised it. So I don't know.
Right.
But, you know, it's where I would expect it to be.
And the special, so the special permit hearing would then come in the following day?
Right, right.
In what day? Would that be the 4th of March?
Yes.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm available for transition.
All right.
Steve.
Yeah, sure.
So, Dave, when you're doing the civil engineering, will you be addressing the septic system? The level of the septic system as it would be installed with the new higher rating and how that compares to the level of the aboving neighbors back of their houses? So in other words, is the septic system going to be higher than the neighbor's backyard, lower? Because I know there's a lot of concern.
Right, we can take a look at it. We actually asked them to be prepared to talk about that. Maybe get some GIS contours for the neighbors to understand where this is relative to those folks.
Yep.
So I can look at that, facilitate that as far as... Basically, the Board of Health needs to approve or not. We don't have a lot to say. We think if I diminish it, push it down, you know, if you follow their cookbook, then they say there is no issue. So, but I think it's something that would happen itself. People look at, kind of a label stares. I think even, I don't think it's, you know, quite higher than, as high in the back as people have it in minds. The system's also underground.
So you're saying it would be great to have a contour drawn so we can see where the grades are?
Yeah, yeah. We talked about that. We had a follow-up meeting after the freezing sidewalk. Talked about maybe just having like a GI, you know, using the GIS contours to kind of tell that story.
Section? Section might not, but yeah, maybe if you drew a section of the rear, you know, if to show where the contour is... Maybe if you drew a section of the rear, you know, if, if to show where the contour is coming out.
We could have... I would say it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be like a typical section where we, you know, we run it from across the street.
Back of the building to the property line.
And up to like a little bit past it.
Right.
Just add three feet.
I think it's a two, I think, I came, we'll get you after, or something. How much are you coming up in the width of septic system?
I don't have it off the top of my head, you know. It's one forty-four right here, it's one forty-five, so it looks like it's in that two.
I should, I... I think that's the corner, though. I think where you've got the system, I think that's pretty much...
Where it is, I would rather have the GIS.
There's existing...
We have no time to get it done.
Right here, there's an existing contour of one forty-two, and there's a spot elevation of one forty-four point one, so.
You're talking two feet. Yeah, but if I remember correctly, properly sort of comes and dips down, it comes back up.
Yeah, there's kind of a...
So it might actually just even out, as opposed to being a mound, it's just a, see as a mound.
Oh, no, you won't see this as a mound.
Well, that's, I think that's a concern.
Oh, is that a concern?
Yeah.
Oh, no. I'm, I'm sorry, this is intended to be used as a play area as well, and these are flat.
So if we can demonstrate that, that's, that's where we're headed.
Okay, no, this is, these are flat, the slope to, you know, flat, these are flat play areas for the children. Anything inside that fence line is exactly for that.
Screen planted.
I apologize, this is not...
We talked about, we had a meeting back a year after that site walk last week, and I've given them direction on the plantings, but I don't think we've had time to...
Okay, so that's another thing that you should look at at the next meeting. All right. Because, you know, I'm thinking about, the guy next door, is, is that a residence? He's sort of back up here, but I'm just thinking about headlights from the parking area, you know.
Right here?
Because he's, he's back in there, so you're not really impacting his house.
This is a retaining wall on the existing property that I think some of you are aware of. Always in the plan was to bring the curb line back from that and plant a three-foot-high natural system. There is an opportunity to put a fence on top of it, retaining wall. I just thought the preference would be a natural barrier. And I like your questions, either business or residence.
Sorry? Maybe next time, too, if you could bring, like, just an area, you know, it doesn't have to be too big, but just, because I think some of these questions get answered if we have, just a plan of a bigger context. With that, you know, for example, that parking lot, I think we see points kind of up towards one seventeen, and his house is back.
Going back.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's like a little compound, it's like three houses or something back. I don't know, but just, just something so we can kind of do, I'll do that.
Okay. Then I think basically the comments from you two would come next time. All right, any other comments or questions from the board?
I sort of have one about traffic. Well, I'm sure you guys are experts now in, in other words, traffic folks, dropping off, people coming in. But there are roughly thirty-some odd parking places, thirty-two.
Thirty, thirty-two.
Thirty-two. And...
One way in.
That's, I'm assuming that's adequate for classes.
It is.
Yeah. And in terms of flow, the way that it occurs is people come in, in other words, they bring their children in, send them back in their cars, like, south.
It's a hundred percent escorted in.
Right.
Children are not dropped at the curb, right in.
In the current, in the current layout, in other words, you have people coming in, parking, parking places, exactly. That's, the flow is the concern here. It's obviously a limited amount of space, but I'm wondering if there is a way where the flow can be integrated with the parking. You see what I mean?
Not without sacrifice of the parking.
Number, number of...
Correct, we tried angles, we tried angular parking, we didn't. We originally had a plan that had twenty-eight on it. It wasn't acceptable to two folks in town with respect to the timing and the drop off, and it wasn't acceptable to the franchise as well. So we've done schools with twenty-eight or less. Actually, there's one school with far less than that, but it's got shared parking. So it works. This is the best we could do with the limitations on the site.
But you know that the drop off and pickup is staggered enough so that you're not going to need...
I don't have, I don't have the exact number on the tip of my tongue, but it is the average, the average drop time is in the study that we submitted, and I can have that readily handy next time. And I don't want to misspeak, I don't want to say it's ninety seconds, but it's mom and mom and or dad or, and or guardian escorting in the child to the classroom.
So in the material that I had sent the link to this application packet to the board, there was basically case study information from New Jersey. So that's, that's what I'm talking with Mike, as well as Bob Michaud, getting the information smart. So let's get regionally relevant traffic information and also lay out exactly what information needs related to the board. And that's one of those things that needs to be related a little bit more than relying on data from a franchise in New Jersey.
And the key is that you don't want more than twenty, your kids are so dropped off at any one time, and you've got a hundred and thirty kids. So it's got, it has to be spread out, or there will be utter chaos. And I don't know how you control that.
We'll have to wait until next time.
Suspense.
Yes.
All will present themselves in a week.
You'll never get them.
You'll... There's very few guys that are operating at a hundred percent capacity. Reading is operating, Reading Mass right up the road is operating near that, but I think they're, they're hitting eighty, maybe a little bit more percent. I'm not sure how they've got their parking.
I don't know, I'm a big believer in never saying never, if you build it, they will come. I mean, there's a reason it's had big.
Right.
It's because you expect eventually to fill up. So we have to, we really have to look at that now, not always never.
The operator is also in attendance, so if you want to speak more about the expected process because also operates the one that is in Wayland. Or just consolidate altogether with traffic.
I think we have to do that, I mean, otherwise we're just waving our arms in here. We don't have any statistical basis for, for the discussion, so. Are there any questions from people in the audience?
Yeah, Mike, explain it.
Could you just identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy Calafas, I'm right next door.
Thank you.
Explain the second fence that you're going to put in that's going to, like, a privacy fence.
It's not a second fence.
Oh.
That's going to go in there, no?
There always was only one fence. We've changed this fence to be a privacy fence. So rather than seeing through it, like you do most of the other ones for a security reason, you know, if somebody's on the other side of the fence, who's the person trying to come over the fence edge? It's a privacy fence, solid, and it's...
But how far, how long is it that?
It starts, it starts over here in this corner.
Not the corner where you showed me the...
It's more towards where Keen's, fire protection has removed all those trees. So it comes up, the logical corner comes up, I'm going to pick a number, it's right here, it's twenty, twenty-some odd feet.
From Keen, sort of?
Away from you, towards north path.
Oh, that, that far in?
Right, right, right here. And it's all along the back, and it connects to the other side.
So she's confused, you're coming back towards her property line and carrying it around. So coming twenty or so feet back to the fiber wall, as we discussed, and then wrapping all the way around to the other side.
I think that fence is going to be, by the time I look at where the, where the profile of the backyard is, if you will, there's no mound, the septic system is fairly low, I'm just going to call that elevation one forty-four, one forty-four five. That's about where that shed is now.
Okay, I know now.
See if you can try to visualize that.
Can you put trees behind that?
Between the fence and the stone wall.
Yeah.
We've got planting scheduled to go in, okay? What I didn't show is I didn't, I didn't, I didn't show them clumped yet. I want a note added here with the board's permission that we would work with the butters, because if I clump them here and you tell me, no, they'd be better off over here, I'd be happy to move them over there, you know, to cut your sightline down. I need to review with Kim, the plants and the height and all that other good stuff. But I like long needle pines that grow all the way to the stone. Have an issue with ingesting.
Any other questions or comments? And I think we would continue until what time?
E thirty on the eighteen.
E thirty on the eighteen. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready, we're going to back up. We're going to back up, but thank you.
For me?
Yeah.
Hope Joe's got plans.
I hope somebody has plans, does anybody have plans?
I asked Cynthia to bring them. I can, I can, I have the electronic ones, and then I do have the modified ones for eighty-four, which goes on to that. Is that you guys' easel or is that their easel?
It's the question.
Is it the board?
Who says?
Is it the board? Yeah, the board. He's had a, he's going to run off again. But you always need to bring plans, even when it's created. I'll be right back when this guy gets here.
Okay, we're going to put you off again.
This is yours, sir.
Thank you. It works.
So, is that your easel?
Yes, sir, it is.